Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We are going to have a presentation from Points Consulting regarding our housing needs assessment study. With that, I will turn it over to Brian Points.
Okay, that was fast. Thank you, Aaron. Is this, is this working? Okay, good. This is working. All right, excellent. Well, thank you, council members for having me. I know you have another meeting coming up after this, so I'm gonna try to get through this in sixty minutes. As per usual, that's really difficult when you've got a report that's, I think it's eighty some pages or so, so just know that there's a lot more there in front of you in the document you have than what we're actually gonna be showing in these slides tonight. And we settled on what I think is a great name, down-to-earth managing housing costs and availability in Woodland Park, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and forty. We experimented with a few other names, including escalation sickness. I thought that one was fun. Aaron thought we should go with something a little more conservative, so that's fine. So we started this project in April, two thousand and twenty-three, and for all intents and purposes, we're done. We've been working with staff to get to this point as well as with Aaron. And, you know, if you have other minor adjustments, recommendations to the document you see, obviously typos, anything like that, then let us know and we'll change it. And we did this report for the sole reason, we wanted to give you something useful on this very important topic of housing. In your comprehensive plan that was published in two thousand and twenty-two, which we'll go over in a few minutes for review, you had a lot to say about housing, about the challenges that are housing-related, affordability, availability. So this is important to you, and you, for that reason, you hired us to dive, deep dive into this topic. We don't do these studies to just say something that everybody knows. We do this because we really wanna get into the weeds and we wanna give you something that you maybe haven't heard. When I give you some potential solutions that you haven't thought of before. That's what we aim to do. Also, I wanna note at the outset that this is not just a product for elected officials. When we do this type of work, we always, as we've probably told you and told the citizens that we've worked with on this, this is actually a product for them. They need to know the solutions too. They're the ones that are landowners. They're the ones that can build houses. The city's not actually gonna build houses. So through that lens, we hope that you look at it that way. Lastly, we typically publish a two- to three-minute executive summary video, which we haven't done yet. It's just kind of part of our process. It's really great at giving a longer life to these types of things and getting it to audiences that aren't usually gonna read reports. So be on the lookout for that as it comes out in a few weeks. So with that, what we're going over, here's the table of contents. There's a lot to get through, obviously. I think that the most kind of mentally intensive stuff is at the beginning, and hopefully, most of our time will go towards that. And then by the time we get to the section around affordability metrics, it'll, we'll go quicker, cuz it'll just be kind of showing you some justification data type of slides to go along with what we've talked about. And then we put the recommendations at the end, so then we'll get back to some headier stuff again at that point. I'm also, there's a reason we're showing the zoning map on this slide, and that's because I like to emphasize to our clients that there are a lot of things housing-related that are not in your control. You can't change the interest rate, right? You can't change the price of lumber. You can't create more contractors with a wave of magic wand. But what you do have control over is land use policy. Okay? So keep that in mind. There are, there are ways that you can make adjustments to help out with these types of problems. So here's our project timeline. I need to remember to do this. All right, there we go. So we started our project back in April, two thousand and twenty-three. These are the stages we've worked through. And as noted, we've worked with the staff on this, mainly Grace, the former assistant city manager was our, kind of our liaison before she left. Then we also worked with Karen and her team as well. Housing problems, lack of housing, I think we tend to think of, well, that's a housing problem. Well, obviously, it's a housing problem, but it's not just a housing problem. It's also an economic development and community development problem. So as you look at this slide and think about, you know, if you're lacking different rungs on this ladder of the housing ecosystem, what are some of the potential consequences of that? This is in the report too, by the way. So you could, you could lose residents. You could lose workforce. You could have people that never even show up, because housing wasn't even an available option for them. So if you have the fences too high for people to take up residency in your community, you risk atrophy in the long term. No new citizens, no new businesses, no workforce, no new ideas. And eventually, all those same people who live there aren't gonna live forever, right? So for context, keep that in mind. We're gonna start with a few slides of our executive summary, and this is just me kind of picking out the most important data points and conclusions. So, so there's not, you know, a ton of detail on these particular slides, but there's more detail in the subsequent slides. So what are some things that are particularly unique, special about Woodland Park? High population growth, especially recently. People coming in make a lot more money than the people who are going out. You have supply constraints. We'll talk about with use of a supply and demand plot here in a minute, what that means. But whatever it is, water, land, zoning, supply constraints put extra pressure on the housing market, and they inevitably, those kinds of restrictions mean that you, the price goes up and the supply goes down. Also, it's interesting to note, I was surprised to find out that according to our analysis, I think everybody's aware of the water problems, right? Shortages of water. Your, your land availability is a bigger problem in terms of the capacity that you can handle using your existing zoning laws. Home price escalation is very high, takes five times the median family income for the city to be able to afford a home. And you could see some other things. I don't need to go through all these. You also have very little territory in town with, in which multifamily or apartment complexes are even allowable, six percent of your land area. That's pretty low. On the national level, it's usually about twenty-five percent. And the community has certain stress points. Short-term rentals, I think you guys, at least temporarily, in the, maybe in the long term, have a solution for that, so we don't have to dwell on that too much. Charis's effect on housing occupancy, the desire to maintain open spaces as development occurs, and opposition to height and density. These are common themes we found in their survey and in our conversations. Again, related to that survey, one of the, it's hard to kind of summarize this, and I did my best. People really don't like apartments. Alright, so we, we gave them the, this, this choice of if you're looking at a predominantly single-family district, which there's a few of, you know, there's large single-family, there's urban single-family, that kind of thing. If you're looking at those, how okay are people with allowing these different types of housing types in that single-family district, assuming that that was allowed? And here was the answer. So very low percentage were okay with apartments. That's not surprising. Nor, you could also say not necessarily anything wrong with that. That's not what that district is for. But as you move up that scale, you go from low density to what is kind of traditionally called middle density, to, where you go high density, middle density, and then, you know, cottage dwelling units are kind of in the middle somewhere. So people don't, aren't good with apartments, but they're a little bit more okay with condos. They're even a little bit more okay with townhomes. Duplexes, triplexes, cottage neighborhoods, and then finally accessory dwelling units, which people are surprisingly good with in single-family districts. So that's a pretty interesting finding. I think gives you some options, right, that you don't have to just be totally binary between single-family and multifamily. There's actually stuff in the middle that can help with availability and affordability too. We did a twenty-year housing supply forecast, or housing demand forecast, and how many units do you need based on the population growth that we expect? We did two types. One of them, we called the status quo option, which is basically, we're assuming that, you know, things kind of continue on the track that they're on, and there's not any major regulatory changes. And then a moderate density option, which assumes that, you know, the full build-out of all the things that Charis wants to do, plus a few kind of moderate changes. So between those two options, somewhere between three hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifteen units. Please note, there is no high-density option. We, as we've told you from the beginning, we're not here to, you know, cram density concepts down the throat of this community if that's not what they wanted, and that clearly was not what they wanted, and you don't have to have that. So regardless of which these two scenarios we're talking about, single-family housing still, would still compose between eighty percent and seventy-four percent of your overall housing.
I, I have a question, though, when you, you talked about Charis and, and the housing option that they're pursuing, which is student housing. How did you believe that that would impact the, the, the city at large? Because residents would not be able to avail themselves of the student housing.
Well, they are residents, and if they're not living there, then they're living somewhere else in town.
Okay.
And, and I have a question for you as well in front of you.
Yeah.
And that is your three hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifteen units, what's your occupancy calculation per unit? Is it two per unit, three per unit? What's your kind of?
Right. I've got a slide on that, and I don't know if I precisely remember what that number is. So if I don't recall that, I'll, we'll look that up and send it to you later.
Okay, and before you get too much further, your very first premise on your executive summary says that, uh, Woodland Park is seeing relatively high population growth. When we look at our last census, we actually went down. So how are you getting that number? You're not obviously not.
We're using, you know, I'll show you a slide on that in a minute. We use the American Community Survey, which is also a census product, but it's done every year, instead of just every, you know, ten years.
Alright.
So, start with the capacity constraints topic. And a little bit of economics. I alluded to this already. Supply and demand, maker of slope upwards, bike curves, slope downward. When you have any form of constraint, again, it doesn't matter if it means you have less water than you need, you have less land than you need, or that you simply can't permit as many housing units on that land as the market might desire, it results in a shift of the supply curve upward into the left. Okay, I'll stop talking like a nerd now. You can see it there. Price goes up, supply goes down. That's situation. So you actually have multiple reasons why that's the case. And this helped, this, not only does this help explain the conditions that you have, which is escalating housing price cost, but also gives you an idea of where, how you can kind of prioritize your options for dealing with this stuff. Alright, first, starting with water capacity constraints. I know Kip has talked to you all about this before, so the first couple of numbers here are just different numbers that he has previously provided. Right, so you've got, yep, we gotta go down. Pardon me, working on it. Twelve sixty, thirteen, six sixty. So these are all kind of based on different, you know, scenarios of water use and acre-feet. You know, gallons per household, that kind of stuff. We use the same type of numbers, but came up with a, a little bit of a higher cap. Basically, under the assumption that as resources get scarcer and more expensive, people tend to be more con, conservative with them. And you can also, you know, policy, techno, new technology options that maybe do exist but aren't being used, or maybe don't exist yet, but will exist in the next twenty years. That all kind of points in that same direction. So we just think it's a little bit of a, a more forward-looking way to not assume a perfect kind of, you know, what economists would call ceteris paribus, or everything is gonna stay the same, cuz it's probably not in the next twenty years. So if you loosen those assumptions a little bit, it's still not a huge bump. Gets you up to sixteen thousand four hundred. Right, and if you're currently at, or just under eight thousand, it gives you some space to work with. There's more details in the math there if anybody's interested in that kind of thing. You've also got this land use and zoning topic. I mentioned this previously. If you look nationally, seventy-five percent of lands in city limits do not allow multifamily housing. That's ninety-seven percent of Woodland Park. So you are extremely restrictive on multifamily. That results in a hike in rental prices. Obviously, there, there's fewer options. When there's less supply, costs go up. So it's, it, it shows six percent there, because the six percent is if we assume it's for just the residentially-zoned districts, to kind of pull out commercial, industrial, like. The land capacity constraint. So here we're, it might seem like we're jumping ahead to the forecast, but we just gotta touch on these things. Because again, there's different ways this could roll out over time. So we forecast population, we forecast units. All we did with this is basically looked at the, the minimum density allowances, or the, sorry, the minimum lot sizes, i.e. the maximum density allowances, according to your current code and according to vacant parcels, while also assuming the development of any of the planned and platted lands that have already gone through the, the process. Okay, so we run those numbers out, and what it tells us is that you can't actually host more than somewhere between eleven thousand one oh nine and twelve thousand nine thirty-six residents. Right, so hence my comment that the land use policy is actually more restrictive currently than the water, than the water issue is.
I, I'm still confused, though, how you can roll in the institutional housing as an option for anyone other than Charis students or Charis faculty. Those individuals could possibly be living in the Springs and not here, so.
I, I think that would be the option for anybody, though, cuz the, the reason we treated it all together is that it's in city limits, right? And the, the people who, you know, to the same degree live and/or work in the community.
But if I were to move here as a brand-new police officer, I couldn't live at Charis.
As full-time residents, but they're going to be living there as if, we don't, right? But it still comes from one side of the water.
Yes, definitely.
So you can't look at it as, well, they're not limiting the ability for us to build, but they are limiting the capacity of people that we can build.
I, yeah, that's, that's a better perspective. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's also, you're considering when the students move from in-town to
Right.
the the, the dormitories or whatever you call them, that
Right.
you're gonna have open housing at that point?
Correct, yes.
Price point in town available.
It accounts for that as well.
Right, okay.
So, okay, so that's the land equation. So now let's get to some more details on the population and housing forecast. There was a question a moment ago about population change. Here's what the data shows. Now I'm on the wrong slide again, so here we go.
What you want, it is still the consideration, cuz it is like a constitution. Because if they get their housing and houses an maximum amount of students, say our population grew to sixteen thousand, just for protect. They can now do up to eight thousand. And we have a population of eight thousand, well now they've just now
Yeah, our, primarily our water capacity, correct, so.
Right. Well, so it's, it, it is a kind of a sub-market in the sense that not everybody could live on the Charis campus. But it's also, it, it's not two separate markets, because they use the same land, they use the same water, and it's people, again, that have the same ability to live or not live in the city.
Well, my question is, is your comment about land is more restrictive than water. So if you're doing a build-out to sixteen thousand plus, that speaks to me that you, we must, if that, if that's even a reality, we would have to re-look at our, at how we have zoned certain pieces of property.
From single residents to.
That's largely where we're going, is that, right? You all said in the problem, and when you hired us, that's something you care about.
Yeah.
And we're suggesting, care about that, you might have to make some changes on those policies
Okay.
to achieve, you know, consequences, outcomes that are gonna allow more people to live here and allow your economy to thrive. Okay, so population data. First, we start with this one, cuz this is the historic data. There's a couple of different dimensions here, but if you're strictly interested in the population, there it is. So you did, it is true that you lost people from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. But if you look at the arc from two thousand and sixteen onward, it's gone up pretty significantly. And the main reason for that is in migration. You're not really producing, you know, through birth, a lot of new residents who are gaining people coming from elsewhere. And you can see some of the counties where that's most commonly the case. So when we do population forecasting, we do a cohort component model. So basically, we look at that prior data, and we also look at how do people age out, you know, what's the likelihood that they're gonna continue to have more children, that kind of thing. We give you two options here. One's a high, high scenario, one's a low scenario. First thing to note is that, yes, you, you will have problems in the future, but to be honest, it's not a dire situation at the moment, cuz even in a high-growth scenario, if you look out to two thousand and twenty-four, you're still gonna be under ten thousand people, most likely. Right, and it's, it's a fairly, you know, you could jump way up, but the likelihood that you're gonna get up to, you know, sixteen thousand is not super high. Likely to get to twelve thousand, it's a possibility. So then you'd start seeing some of those pinches. So it's not dire in the sense you must fix it now. I would say it's, it's important, it's critical that you fix it in the next five to ten years. So built on top of that, population forecast is a housing forecast. And again, here you see the three hundred and fifty-seven to six hundred and fifteen new units, and this actually shows the change, the percent change by different unit types. So status quo, mostly single-family homes. Whereas the higher unit forecast has a mix of single-family and some of these middle-density options and some other stuff. Alright, so the low scenario, that's an average of thirty-six new units a year, and the high scenario, that's an average of sixty-two new units per year.
How, how are you? How are you having single-family homes going, accelerating higher on a graph? I don't quite understand them. Can you, you got, you got a blue line is the status quo, and the high unit forecast is sing, is it single-family homes, or is it just deceptive? That that's the first one on your list?
Yeah, the, the lines are the total for single-family and everything else.
Oh, you're on the, okay. You're aggregate.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, please, if, if anybody has questions, don't, don't hesitate. It's, it's a work session, right? Okay, so that was the headiest stuff. And I think it's things you think, need to think the hardest about. There's a lot of kind of methodological stuff that we kind of glossed over, so we can get through everything. But if there's other questions on it, let me know. So what else is important? Affordability metrics. So we ran a model, just looked at, you know, an average median, median income household. What if they got an average thirty-year fixed-rate mortgage at current rates? How many people in the city could actually afford a house at the current prices as of, I think this was September? The answer is thirty-nine, sorry, twenty-nine percent. You know, twenty-nine percent of households. That's not a lot. That's pretty, that's a pretty tough market. So good time to be a homeowner, if you're seeing that, that price appreciation, really hard to become a homeowner. Not only that, but the households who do own their own homes, have an owner-occupied home, one-fifth of them are what housing and urban development would consider cost-burdened, meaning they pay twenty percent or higher of their household income to mortgages, which, or sorry, thirty percent or more, which is a lot. And you could argue, well, that's their choice, you know, maybe, maybe for some people, that's not a problem, but in general, that's a lot, when you consider cost of groceries and transportation, all the other stuff. What about renters? Well, one thing, there's not a lot of rentals, and that's actually gone down recently, in recent years too. That's on this slide, it's on a, a later slide. So we've looked at renters. A third of them are in that same cost-burden category. So it's twenty percent of homeowners, thirty-three percent of renters paying lots of money. There's an even higher category of severely cost-burdened. That means that you pay fifty percent of your household income for rent. That defines twenty-six percent of the renters at Woodland Park. Lots of numbers, I know. But it's not surprisingly, most of those folks are in what you would call the low-income or very-low-income categories. Comparison of affordability. So here we're looking at increase in home values compared to increases in income. That's right, where typically, where does the money come from to buy a house? Comes from your income. Maybe some people have a lot of savings, maybe some people have pensions, so it's not always income. And you compare that to rent, you compare it to cost of housing, here's what you get. A really tough situation. This one, we can only do at the county level, so we're looking at Teller County. You can see that size of that gap, right? So between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty-two, home values went up one hundred and twenty-one percent. They're more than double. While income only, only increased twenty-two percent. Your actual purchasing power of people who live in the community is also going down significantly in real terms. Rent prices haven't gone up as much, that's eighty-eight percent. But as we'll see, they'll probably also continue to climb. Oftentimes, rent prices kind of trail home price, home values. Alright, so a bit more on housing-related data. Just a little bit about who composes your community is probably isn't super surprising to you, but it, it's interesting and it's unique, and it kind of shapes what this community is about. You have a lot of people in a couple of different unique bands of, of age. So you have people in the twenty-to-thirty-four-year-old age group, more than, more than typical, and you have more than typical in the fifty-five-to-sixty-four-year-old age group. So if I had to put it into three, this doesn't define everybody. Again, these are the, the general categories, the three buckets. Highly-educated, middle-aged, white-collar commuters. Number two, middle-aged and middle-class Charis-associated people. And young, low-income Charis-associated people, and actually, there's four. That should be another bullet, retirees. That's kind of, it's kind of what mostly makes up the community. Your existing housing stock. So you all are a very single-family, owner-occupied-oriented community, and again, we don't wanna turn that table completely upside down. You gotta work within the boundaries of what people are, are gonna accept. So you have seventy-nine percent of your units are detached, single-family. In other words, just a house. Seventy-two percent are owner-occupied, so they're not precisely the same thing. Most of the rentals tend to be in this little band, just south of the, either in downtown or just south of the highway. And you've got very little land where you could actually add more multifamily. Now, you could go through the planned unit development process, and some people have done that. That's not really ideal. It's a lot of hoops for people to jump through. Home value trends. You can see them, you can see how it works. Some people are numbers-oriented, some people are graphically oriented. But what we found, this is data according to Zillow. A typical home, so again, the, once, one interesting thing about the Zillow data is it's not multiple listing service data. So it's not actually saying, what is a house selling for? Because they may not transact. That's just what it's listed for. They're saying this is what, what Zillow models the price of all typical homes to be. So it's a pretty helpful number. So according to that, you're over half a million for a typical-priced home. That's gone up by about fifty thousand the past twelve months, which is an eleven percent increase. And that's greater, greater rate of increase in the state of Colorado. Again, keep coming back to the supply and demand charts. Helps you understand why this might be the case. Rent data. So just isolating the renters. Current averages for one-bedroom, our data find over fifteen hundred for a two-bedroom, over nineteen hundred. Escalation really started in two thousand and fifteen. It's continued up to two thousand and twenty-two. And interestingly, there's also fewer listings, so there's twenty percent fewer units that are actually, you know, available for people than they're used to. Making it even more difficult. Okay, what about supply? Cuz houses have to get built too. It's not all about what people want. So here's your, your trend lines for the city permitting over the past, you know, roughly sixteen years. And this shows single-family and multifamily by number of units. And this shows single family and multifamily by number of units. Multifamily tends to do this thing. It jumps and then it goes back to zero. Because people build, you know, fifty, hundred units at a time. So you don't have a lot of activity there. Your uh, single family trends are pretty interesting because it really did take off from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen. And then dove and then it took off again. So, uh, a lot of these kind of, you know, the, uh, the, the more higher end houses. Spec houses, the custom houses, those are getting built. Trends are showing that they're going to continue to get built. That said, you don't have, remember the number sixty two? From that high unit forecast that we looked at at the beginning, right? It was either thirty, I think it was thirty nine or sixty two. You've never, you've never reached the high number in recent history. So if you wanted it, again, it's a pretty conservative forecast, even the high unit number, because you have, have yet in the past sixteen years to ever hit that level of supply production. Okay? If you use the status quo, you clearly can hit that level. You can hit thirty nine ish units per year. Alright, we'll go over this community survey a little bit. It's important to go to what, what the community member said. So a little bit more math for you, uh, basically. Uh, ninety five percent confidence interval, we're saying that we're really confident that this, it doesn't seem like a high number. Uh, but to get around five percent of your adult population, that's usually what we, what we aim for. Because with that, we can say we're confident that we captured the community's perceptions. Uh, we use the what's up with them park website. We also used Facebook to kind of promote it. Uh, and there were just interesting to note, there's a lot of people who look at it, but don't take it, and there's some value in that too. So over seventy nine hundred people actually saw it, not all of them necessarily took the survey though. So first one is just a little bit of demographic information, you know, who are they? How long have they lived here? Uh, sixty five and older is the largest demographic group. We're a little bit overrepresented on that, that tends to happen with surveys, but it's not a huge gap. So actually twenty two percent of the city's population is over sixty five. And thirty three percent of the respondents for over sixty five. So. Would have been nice to get some younger people, but obviously that's something we always all struggle with. Most of the people have also lived here for a while, eleven plus years. But we, uh, because we got statistically significant numbers. You can cut the data at certain points and say, well, what about people who've only lived here for three years? What do they think? And in the, uh, in the report, we actually did that and provide some interesting different cuts on the data in that way.
Uh, may I ask a question? Can you point out, go back, please go back to the previous slide? Uh, uh, on the homeless, the colors uh coding that you're using. Uh, my eyes cannot. Break apart the rent unpaid residency and homeless. Uh, I can see the black, the own, can you tell me, are there any homeless?
It's just very, very small. You, you can see a tiny green sliver.
At the end of the big.
At the very end. And some of them don't even have that sliver at all.
Isn't that the unpaid residence?
Oh yeah, what's the difference of unpaid residence?
So that would be somebody who's, you know, crashing with somebody else but not paying rent, basically.
Okay, if that green then is the homeless on the far right. How big is the unpaid resident? Is it so small?
It's also very small.
Okay.
Both of those are small enough to. Not really, you know, we could have just shown other it, or not shown it at all, but they're there, small number.
Of course it is.
Yeah, and you could say, well, what's the difference between an unpaid resident and homeless? There's differences, but largely it's about allowing people to opt into what they consider themselves to be, you know, self, self definitional.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, what type of housing you reside in? Single family, again, that's seventy uh, two, seventy plus percent for housing stocks, so that's not surprising. Most people live with friends or, sorry, with family, and then some people with friends or roommates. So those are just kind of demographic, not super interesting, just kind of, you know. Know who, who took it. This one is more interesting. Uh, I think a really critical question, again, for policy and for the future. Just ask people, would you like to see the city of Woodland Park's housing stock increase? And you can say strictly no. Or you could say yes in a couple of different ways. So we didn't just want to say yes or no, because people may say, yes, but, right? I don't, yes, but I don't want this type of housing, so we gave them that option.
Yeah. So we look at the people who.
Can you take those numbers and just tell us what they are so we can write them next to what they are? Your, your color, I can't match it. So yes, how many percent?
So yes, it, uh, and there was a, on the, the version that you have, I had to make some changes to the language. So what you see, the numbers are correct on the chart, but I had to make some changes to the language, so I'll give you those numbers right now.
Okay.
Uh, most survey takers want to see more house, that's fifty six percent. The fix, fifty six percent is the total of the three yeses, the three yes boxes. Okay?
Oh.
So you could say, yes, but just single family. You'd say, yes, but just dense stuff. Like multifamily, or you could say yes in a mix of things. And that was what the proponents of people said. Or the plurality, the thirty five percent of people said that. Okay, so in total, more than half of the residents said they do want to see more residential. Right? That's, that's kind of the important takeaway. At the same time, thirty five percent of the population said, we don't want more housing at all. At least not right now. Which is also a pretty big number.
Yeah.
Not a number to ignore. But as I often point out, during projects like this, just because people make a lot of noise, doesn't mean they're the majority. That's the point of statistical significance. Right? Housing cost perceptions, uh, so we asked people, have you had difficulty finding suitable housing within your budget? And, you know. Generally speaking, older people didn't ha- had that problem less often, but that's because they weren't, weren't typically looking for a place to live. But the people in that thirty five to forty four year old age group, or that twenty five to thirty four year old age group, said absolutely yes. And then almost half of people said that, not me, but somebody, but others, right? They said, not me, but others have struggled, have been uh displaced from their housing due to housing cost in the past. Year, uh, past, what do we say, year? Right? Uh, so what do they mean by others? You know, that we don't know, could have been a friend, could have been a family member, could have been they read a news article. But it's also a big number, almost half the population said that. And then we've got uh rental costs and purchasing costs, and again, we break it out by what type of housing unit they live in currently, right? It's a lot of data. Uh, short story is that uh, a lot of people think that it's expensive, it doesn't matter whether it's a rental or it's a home purchase. And people who are living in apartments or studios, or manufactured, or mobile homes. Or duplexes, triplexes, or townhomes are more likely to say, yeah, it's way too expensive. So what do people not like about, in particular about the housing market, other than cost and availability? So we gave some options here and people said, so they said, it's too expensive or too difficult to fix up. Too much conversion to short term rentals, then not going to dwell on that one too much. Not enough residences to house the people who want to live here, it's number three. Lack of housing for underprivileged and high needs populations is number four, yeah, over a hundred and fifty people select that option. So, you know, it seems that a lot of people care about that, it seems to me. Uh, which tools would you be in favor of the city allowing in order to provide more housing? Uh, and I know city has a no incentive clause, I've read it, I understand it, all that kind of stuff. But people, we wanted to give people a broad, you know, number of things to select from, and not all these things are incentives. You know, some of them are just things you can do. So they like the idea of incentives for remodeling. Number two, changes to zoning code, regulation or requirements to allow for a mixture of housing types. People were pretty into that idea. That, that is interesting to me actually, because oftentimes we work in communities where people are like, well, what difference does zoning? Right, you know, they don't aware of that, but there's, there seems to be a high awareness in this community. Okay, so.
It's surprising that, that many individuals would say incentives are something that they would consider, because. Uh, voters have voted down and changed that charter of.
Right.
Three times.
Yeah, no, it's interesting. I mean, I would say to that though, too, there's different. Like the word incentives. For me, doesn't necessarily mean like a cash giveaway, like a stipend. It means policies that encourage or discourage cer- certain types of behavior. Like that's not, you know, maybe that's because I'm, I'm an economist, but I do think that some people have that kind of perception too. Alright, few more on the survey before we get to recommendations, so thanks for hanging in there. We showed people pictures of different housing types and we said, where in town does this fit? Right, so this is kind of our, our way of cutting through the fat of NIMBYism. Because a lot of people say, well, yeah, I like that idea, just, you know, not here, not anywhere within, you know, two mile radius. So we, we forced them to say, well, well, where would it go then? And the, that, that was, you know, that second slide where I showed, you know, how are people, how comfortable are people with different housing types that came from this state of here? So I'm just showing two of these. First one is apartments, and a lot of people said nowhere, we don't want apartments at all. Uh, but then there's, you know, a lot of other people that said, well, it's okay in the right kind of zoning districts. But when you get to other types of housing units, this middle density stuff like accessory dwelling units. Totally different story, not very, you know, still a lot of people said nowhere, but it was actually number three on the list. That's, uh, whereas large lot, single family neighborhoods is number one on the list, and then moderate sized, single family neighborhoods is number two.
So nowhere's the blue, the little blue houses? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, nowhere's the number three bar.
I see it's the number three bar, but what, and it just helped me out with, what's the little blue? These are ADUs?
Yeah, those are just pictures of ADUs, yeah.
Alright.
Oh, I get what you're, yeah.
Very nice.
It's like outside the camp. No, it was just a illustration for when we put it in the survey, like what is, a lot of people don't know those terms, so it's like, here's what an AU is, basically.
It's less.
Okay, on recommendations. We'll start with this. These are conclusions of envision Woodland Park twenty thirty, you had a lot to say about housing. At that time, there was actually seventeen different topics, different goals that were assigned on this issue. You know, the whole point of a comprehensive plan, exercise in research. Priority setting and policy formulation. Right, so you should see policy flow downhill from, from your cop plan, right? I mean, Karen's the player, she knows it's better than me. So we're just trying to help you push these ideas more into the corner. And I picked out the thirteen that were most kind of aligned with the, uh, our findings and our recommendations. Here's a nice little graphic with the recommendations. Three different topics, zoning related, resource management related, short term rentals. You know, at the time that we were doing this, we didn't know where the short term rental thing was going to go. So we just had to kind of take it for where it was at, and we couldn't be silent on the topic, because obviously everybody wanted to know something on it. So maybe those recommendations aren't as significant to you. Which is fine. First topic, zoning related. One point one, allow by right development of multifamily units in multifamily areas. If I could put like a. Neon blinking sign over anything in this presentation, it is that. Like you, you, you have two zoning districts that are called multifamily. And people can't build multifamily in those districts without getting permission from the planning commission. So why are you even calling it multifamily? I, I've never seen that. Never seen that anywhere. Should be fixed. Uh, allow by right development of duplexes in several areas. So trying to play in this middle space of, alright, people don't like apartments, but it doesn't have to be apartments. Do, you know, things that are closer to single family, but a little bit tighter in density. So there's areas of town, we're not saying that makes sense everywhere, but the lot sizes in Woodland Park are big. It doesn't matter whether it's, uh, I'm trying to remember, it's like MR and UR, they're both pretty big.
You are an expert.
You are an expert, thank you, sir. Uh, empirically speaking, you did the math, like, you know, there's a lot of space out there, so, you know, pick corner lots. Pick, uh, arterial corridors, pick spots that aren't going to have as much kind of negative impact on people. And you start allowing duplexes there, over time you'll start to see more units. Uh, number three, marginally increased dwelling units per acre. Again, really low, uh, your, your dwelling units per acre are really low compared to national averages. So we're just recommending a little bit of a tweak on that. Uh, so one point two five dwelling acres in SR and six dwelling acre, eight, up to six dwelling units per acre in UR. Just that change could accommodate at least forty, forty more units in that same land area. Reduced regulations on accessory dwelling units, so you do allow them, right? We read that in the code, but there's a lot of, a lot of things that may prevent people from actually doing it. The, you know, size restrictions and, and things like that. Uh, so, and just saying, it might be so limited that you won't really see the uptake of it that you otherwise might. And we give some more details on that in the report. One nice thing about ADUs is they also give this option of people to age in place who love their, love their property. They love living in Woodland Park, but they maybe don't necessarily, you know, when they get to a certain age, they don't. Need a three thousand square foot house anymore. So they could move to the, you know, accessory dwelling in it. Family member could move into the, the bigger house, or they could stay there, you know, somebody could live in the unit with them and help them out when they need help. Uh, more zoning related stuff, one point five rezone mobile home park locations to ensure, ensure future high density status. So on this one. You, you got a couple manufactured home parks that are placed in particularly strategic locations. I'm not advocating for just erasing them, you know, but I do think the market is going to take care of that in the next kind of ten or twenty years. And when that happens, just think about what you have there. Right? It's in the city. There's already an expectation for high density. And in some cases, it's already zoned to allow for it. Right? So instead of letting that pass and letting those get developed into, you know, single family homes. That's your opportunity to capture that and say, alright, we're going to keep it this way. So we can take more, expand the size of that three percent of your multifamily currently allowed for. In some cases, there may also be, uh, I don't know the details here, but I've seen this in other places. If the utilities are good, the utility lines on the actual property are good. It gives you further options for doing things like cottage housing, right? Um, because you can use that same, same kind of footprint in the lines within the, the property itself, whether that's one acre, three acres or whatever. Run to units and they pop out of the ground, and you could just, you know, once the unit is gone, you could put something else that's placed. Uh, one point six, apply best practices from PUD and cluster developments to zoning code. Uh, PUDs have been very, very popular in Woodland Park. Uh, in my opinion, that's partly because the, a lot of the zoning code is very restrictive and also sometimes indecipherable. So it's kind of an option that actually allows you to do something, okay? So, but the beauty of that is that you've kind of used it as a Petri dish to work some things out. Right? Okay, here's how we can maintain open space, but also have a little bit of density at the same time. Look for those ways to kind of take those ideas and embed them back into the code. Because they, they've worked before and they could work again. But if it's not by right. Right? If you have to ask permission, if you have to go jump through all the hoops, and a lot of people won't even bother doing it. They won't even come talk to you. You won't even know that you're missing the opportunity to never come talk.
I don't think so.
One point seven, update and clarify zoning code, zoning ordinance document, you know, I think you've been clear about some of the problems there. Uh, I could point to some really specific stuff, but, you know, it's just some unclarity, basically. When you have unclarity, it actually wastes a lot of staff time, because they have to, you know, clear up ambiguities all the time, and then people get upset. And then they, you know, people spend money because they had to, oh, I thought it meant this, and then you told me it meant that, just, you know, it could be better. Alright, resource management, uh, alter city code related to the use of incentives.
It's not the code, it's the charter and it would require a citizen vote.
Yep, got it, more of that. So that, there's one, one way to interpret that, which is that. But I want to expand your guys' mind for a moment on this topic. Okay, because again, incentives doesn't necessarily have to mean stipend or a cash, you know, direct cash transfer. I, I think my interpretation is that's what the code is talking about.
It's not the code.
Excuse me, the charter, pardon me. But there's, there's different ways that you could look at that, okay? Um, if you, if you give density bonuses. Is that an incentive? According to the city charter? Will you tell me?
Yes.
Okay, so we got one that says so. It's not a, it's not a cash transfer. It's an allowance of something for following certain policy goals. So I think you guys should think about that. Uh, point two point two. Encourage lower, lower water usage through fee structures and policies. Uh point two point two, encourage lower, lower water usage through fee structures and policies. I, basically, it's just a matter of math on the water stuff, right? You you're using a certain amount of water per household right now, I showed on a prior slide, it's actually going, the water use numbers are going down. Not dramatically, but they are going down over time, other way you can get it to go down? Increase prices. Offer, hate to use the word, incentives for people to use lower flow appliances, right? Because that doesn't mean you're giving them cash, just means that you can, you know. Give them a, right, reduce their fees, something like that. So, you you know, given that that water topic, it's a big issue, and you can't change it, like you're not overnight going to just discover more water. Or, you know, get get better water rights, so it's just about how do we shepherd that resource best possible. Two point three, track and publicize water usage. People get into this kind of stuff when they feel like it's a game and they can win, right? But but they don't, you know, there's not really an easy way to see what the water use data for the city is right now. Like it gets maybe published once a year, it's not easy to find, if there was like monthly updates on this stuff. Like I could see people being like, all right.
Individuals are are able to do that with a phone app.
Okay, I mean, you can maybe do it for yourself, but I think it's a different situation when it's a community wide issue. Because then you're kind of doing it together, you're doing it together. If you're on the same page, about fifty six percent of the people saying we want more housing units, how are we going to get more housing units? We make better use of what we have. You can see that kind of dropping statistically over time. Uh could could really help with the problem.
Yeah, I think it'd be better time to get low flush toilets.
Uh that's part of two point two, so that is part of what we're saying. Short term rentals. Basically not going to go into this. I don't know, some of this stuff might still be relevant, but, you know, it's. We'll have have a solution on. Um resource management is the last topic here.
Re- resource management and one of the things you have here is like reducing utility tap fees. One of the, one of the challenges about doing that is that the tap fees are set to also. Um keep pace with some of the developments we need in terms of our 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 water treatment, et cetera. So once you start taking it off from here, then you're, you're uh robbing some other part of our uh long term planning.
I don't necessarily see it that way, because I think that part of the cost for those tap fees is. The expense that's incurred by the city to provide that service, right? But if it's an infill project, and there's already water right up to the edge of the site, it's obviously not going to cost as much to the city to provide it. Okay, and I will further add, this is on a prior slide. Multifamily uses significantly less water per household than does single family. So again, if you're trying to make the best, make the most of what you got. There's really a justification for giving a break to infill, especially if it's.
I I saw that statement earlier in your presentation, I just wondered what the rationale was behind it, because there are less fixtures. Um in a multifamily unit than there would be in a single family home?
Well, it's just a, um, there's not a a rationale behind it from my perspective, it's just the numbers. But I think you could, you know, you could draw a conclusion, it's probably something like that, like square footage is lower, you know, appliances are lower. Number of people living in the unit are lowers, like that's all, that's probably all goes.
I would be hard pressed, though, to say that's a reason then to build more apartments.
Okay, well, that's one conclusion, somebody could come to.
Being able to reduce the fees, we have developed a willingness to help, like our our personal tap fees are extraordinarily high. And council keeps voting to increase them, and kids argue that was, then it doesn't increase everyone's personal water. Like my water bill is like eighteen dollars a month, and I live in a forty three hundred square foot house, and it's like. I think I could afford that, but but it's. Like the argument is, well, it's saving residents, but it's also ultimately in taxation going to cost us, we are not growing our residency. And the only way to do that, not the only thing, but part of the way to help is to be able to reduce those commercial tap fees. And most of those commercial lots already have taps on, they don't need to build too.
But this study does not address that commercial side of it.
But when I agree, development, I'm thinking, how do we incentivize? The commercial aspect of it, because they're the ones that have got to come and do it, whether it's single family or multiple.
Most of the multifamilies, aren't they built as a um commercial?
Yeah, and they, and most of the lots already have the taps sitting there, and like.
So and the taps are two different.
Some of our mobile home parks have like six taps sitting on them, they're commercial, so, and they're not being used.
But commercials much higher than the residential.
Correct.
Very much, you know, because we we, and we vote to raise in fee of storage instead of residential. But our residential is very low, as it is, I'm not, I'm not advocating to do one or the other, I'm just saying what's going on.
Uh if I could, on the topic of commercial, we, obviously, it's not a commercial and industrial, you know, land use study, it's a residential study. But we did account for it on the water use equation in the sense that uh there's a buffer built in. And to what the city thinks is going to be there in the future, we kept that same buffer, right? So it's not like, it was like, everything's going to go towards residential, you know? We just, we didn't assume that the buffer escalates. And I think that some of the math in the city's current equation does assume that, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
It's like good habitat for humanity, but they, they struggle to build, I know they're not here right now, they struggle to build because of that tap fee. And and we can't offer any incentivization for low income housing with habitat to humanity.
At least in terms of water taps.
Right, because our hands are tied with the incentivization, so it's a suggestion of. Would there be a way around it, at least for low incomers? But I don't know how we get it done, but we need to figure out.
No, it's fine, it's it's all part of the discussion, so that's actually all that we've got, uh so. Right, six o'clock, um I don't want to rush out of here, but I also don't want to occupy your time, so I'm at Aaron's disposal, depending what he wants me to do.
Well, the, on that resource management, you also have encourage workforce housing development, you want to talk a little about that?
Oh, sorry about that, I may have glossed over that real quick. Um, yeah, I, it it's really building on the same kind of idea, right, like, what what things can you do? Right? Honestly, these things kind of assume that that uh piece of the charter isn't there, because a lot of the tools you don't really have right now. But there are tools and other cities are doing it, so it's along those lines.
So talking about other cities, and it goes back a few slides, but what's your assessment of where Woodland Park is? On on the build out and development as opposed to other cities that you you've studied?
Yeah, um, you know, some of the challenges that you have are just purely environmental, you know, water slopes. That kind of stuff, like it, yep, horse land, you know, it, um, you can't change those things, it's where you are. Um and that creates some particular challenges, you know? Um, the the zoning stuff, you know, it's, I I'd be hard pressed to think of another city that I've worked with that has. So many, um, so multifamily, so so single family oriented, uh and and having that kind of built into the code. Um, so, and again, that, you know, clearly, the the land, land supply forecast concept, the vacancy rates, so we looked at. That's part of, part of what creates this pinch in the housing cost and reduces availability, so. That's kind of my conclusion, I think you're getting, you're getting attention, people build stuff here. But it's really, really hard to build anything except for a, you know, kind of a McMansion at this point.
Um, over the years, and many years ago, um, the focus of people in our community was really. High dense, low density, they didn't want any high density anywhere, and that's why we have what we have, that's why we're where we are. Because we went through several annexations back then, there were lots of annexations coming through the system. And then they stopped, because I think we annexed everything that seemed reasonable and appropriate, and that folks wanted to be annexed into the city. And so with that perspective, and the desire of the community, very passionate about low density. And you'll see outside of this city core, the lots get larger in those annexations and in those. Areas that came into the city within the last twenty five years. So just a little history on why things are like that, and I think the code was. Made to point in that direction, if you will, so that's kind of, from my perspective over the years, why we're where we are.
Right, and it was obviously successful at doing that.
Yeah, it was. But I do appreciate the recommendation you made about um. Uh revamping our our zoning, the the three titles within our our code that um reference zoning, and that is going on. I I don't know if you've had that discussion with Karen or not, but that's an ongoing process, it's been very tedious, but necessarily so. We're trying to to make it easier for the developer to come in and not have to, you know. Every time he turns around, have to start a new process over, so that's, that is in in the works. Um and I appreciate that as an outside observer, you you made that recommendation.
Great, thank you, yeah, I've talked to Karen about that, it's time consuming, it's hard work. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, I love the town. It's a privilege, thank you.
And where do you come out of?
Uh I'm from Moscow, Idaho.
I thought you were from Idaho, yeah, very good, yeah, good job.